So, good morning, everyone. Today's Monday, March 28th, 2022. Time is 11:00 a.m. Special meeting agenda with the University of Idaho. Attending are Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Philios and representatives from the University of Idaho. Welcome, everyone, and guests. And we have a couple of business items. The first one being fiscal year '23 extension office budget request for Mr. Mike Howell from the University Northern District Director. Go right ahead, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Actually, I have, and then I have a second thing also in addition to that. I am Mike Howell. I'm the Director for the Northern Extension, University of Idaho District, Extension District. And with me today, and they've signed in, but the Kootenay Extension Office has a, what we're calling an Extension Task Force, sort of a focus group, advisory group, and a select members of that group are with us here this morning. Pierce Clegg, which I think most of you know, Joe Dobson, Bob Bealland, Julie Green, and Teresa Baldorama, who's in the office. In the short time that we have this morning, I guess, and the budget would be one of those shorter items, is that in the packets that I've presented to you, I have a copy of our preliminary budget for FY '23. I guess the main thing to note there is that we're requesting the same budget for '23 as we did for '22. Part of the reason for that, of course, is I'm going to attribute to COVID and to some other elements. And I think because of that, in the way, as you all know, the way we've had to do business, it wouldn't be prudent for us to ask for more than what we had last year. But second is the fact that I think the second part of our discussion is, and probably the most important part, would be in reference to the renewal of the lease. And if there's additional funding that may be needed for that, then that would certainly be a priority over the FY '23 budget. So, the budget, as I've presented it, is what we're going to, is what we will submit, or you can take it as a submittal already. However you want to do that would be fine. So, that's the budget, Chairman.
Okay. Go ahead, Leslie. Do you have any questions?
Well, just to remind everybody of the process, this is just the presentation, and then we get into budget deliberations and find out how much funds there is available, then we can go on there. Regarding the lease, can you just remind me again why the University of Idaho is charging us, the University of Idaho, to stay there?
Primarily because of the three-way partnership, I guess, or the, as I, we've always referred to it as the three-legged stool, which is the state, federal, and local partnerships. We have both, we're part of the federal system, we're funded through the state, and for us to have an extension office in any of the forty-some counties in the state, as well as any of the counties nationwide, there's that local partnership, which, if you remember in the past when the extension office was in the elections office, then that was, in addition to the office space and to the travel and the phone and the janitorial and all those things that came with it, all the in-kind things, it was the county's contribution to that partnership. When we lost that facility and tried to seek another one, maybe it was by, just by chance that that facility was open and by chance it was owned by the University of Idaho. If there is not a match with the county, then they don't consider it a full partnership. So, if we were in Leighton County and Leighton County said, "We're not going to support extension," there wouldn't be an extension office. If the same, so every county in the state is supported in that manner. So, even though we're a university entity, it's like you're, it's like, you know, how you operate the county. The university's made up of colleges, of departments, of units, and each one of those has to stand alone financially. And so, we have to pay our way, so to speak, and allow for the partnership that creates the cooperative extension that's been here for, I don't know, close to 100 years probably now.
Okay, so the university owns the facility.
They own the facility.
Why, then, a 20% increase in the rent?
Part of the task force that we had, that we've met a couple times now, and in, part of that has involved, well, let me back up. So, Charles Buck, who some of you knew, CEO, he's gone now. Larry Stauffer is the interim. In the last meeting that our task force had, part of the discussion was, we're going to meet with the commissioners, we want to move forward. In fact, I think I actually asked if, you know, there was a chance maybe to get the, you know, the university special, so to speak, and the response was, we need to take a look and talk to the folks on campus, which they did, and they came back with about a $643 a month increase. It's at about 97 cents a square foot per month, which includes, you know, everything, parking, the internet, the janitorial, all that. And currently, the other entities in that facility are paying about $1.53. So, we are getting a special, I guess, a little bit.
But you're also getting $160,000. I mean, we have to look at the total picture.
So, when you guys were, when we were in a county facility, and I didn't, I don't know if I have, I don't think I have that with me, if we were to look at the budget, there was a Attachment A or whatever, in which, when we presented a budget and you gave it back, then the county included an in-kind amount. So, you guys identified so many square feet that was worth a certain amount, and then all the other things that were provided. And the last time that, it was, I think it was Appendix A, the last time that we did that, before we switched over to this new way of how we do things, where we send the money to campus, I think your in-kind amount at that time was a little over $57,000. So, I guess from my perspective...
Annually?
Annually.
Okay.
The in-kind. And so, the in-kind, again, then speaks to your partnership to the three-legged stool, then, if that makes sense. So, you guys, and you added, I mean, you provided the square foot charges, and I'm assuming those were based on market or whatever. The other, you know, so just like the university, you were paying for the janitorial, you were paying for the phones, you were paying a certain amount for the support staff and for the travel and those type of things. So, the 160, 159,000 then basically continues to cover all those other things, mostly the support, for the support staff, the travel, the publications and all those type of things. And when we lost this, lost that space, then we had to have something, and so...
Bill, do you have any questions?
I don't.
And I guess part of this is, the other piece, I guess, before we open it up for discussion maybe more, is, is, well, I guess two things. One is, we don't want, and I think you guys are in the same boat, we don't want, we have about five months. We probably should have been here sooner, but I don't, and I don't think you guys want to wait till August to decide where we're going to put the extension.
Right.
So, that's one thing. I guess the second thing would be, is, you know, there's, there's a lot of things changing in this county, and one of them, I think, are facilities that the county's going to acquire or maybe already have. And I think, you know, to be able to do a good, efficient job of trying to analyze where people best fit, it's going to take some time. And I guess if we could extend this lease, then that would allow us and you and others the time to, to really take the time to determine where do we fit and how do we do that, would be the other part.
Well, from my perspective, I'd like to create the least amount of disruption as possible, because it's disruptive to you guys with your operation, it's disruptive for us as well. But again, realize, and this is no news, I mean, we're getting hit left and right, especially with regard to law enforcement and the increases they're looking for, despite the fact that we've done the best we could over the last few years in getting the wages up, but it continues to be a challenge. And it's not just there, we have 850 employees, and when you look at some of the studies, we have other employees that are underpaid as well. But we have to maintain a certain service level, no matter the type of service that's being offered. So, we have hard decisions that have to be made. I understand your situation, because ultimately, if the fairgrounds were to stay where they are and they complete their master plan and build their building, logically, that's where you would go. So, but the real question, I think, that confronts us is, what do we do between now and then? Somebody suggested the other day, but that's not going to be available for a year and a half, well, what about Kootenay North, meaning the Kootenay Electric Building that we purchased? Quite frankly, I hadn't thought about that, but somebody brought it up and they said, was it you, Joe?
It was.
It was you? And I said, well, maybe that's something a little, and I have no idea whether that's feasible, okay? But that won't be available for probably at least another year and a half, if it's even workable. But obviously, we have some decisions to make. Leslie, any thoughts?
Just the fact that, you know, that county's contribution's about $203,000 a year, and I mean, that's three patrol cars, that's two patrol deputies, so it's just something that we have to weigh out, and that's why it's really early in this situation. So, we'll just take it under, you know, everything else that we have to fund.
Bill?
I have no problem with it. I think it's very important that we maintain the relationship and that we support 4H, and we work together to find where and when and how, and we don't start nibbling on 4H in the university. Those are bad places to cut.
So, and I appreciate that, and I think you know this, members of this task force also are representing forestry, agriculture, 4H, master gardeners, we don't have a family consumer science representative, but, so it's a broad, you know, program area that we're trying to cover.
But if we don't have money to fund 911, we can't keep deputies in the jail? You know, it's just a priority issue. So, we'll see how much growth has allowed us to fund and all that stuff. So, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that you guys aren't important, because most, everything that comes before us is important, but I've got to look at law enforcement right now first, and so when I do that, then we'll, we'll kind of find out where we're at.
Yeah, and again, I'll repeat what I said earlier, from my perspective, I'd like to see you stay where you are, at least for the next year, if not two. I'd also like to talk to someone at U of I and say, hey, guys, 20% increase isn't going to cut it, okay? Not with, not with all the other demands that are being made on us. In the midst of all this, we have a legislature that keeps cutting into our taxing ability, and they're operating under the assumption, and I'm going to be very candid, that property taxes are too high. That's hogwash. When you look at Idaho property taxes on a national scale, we're 13th from the bottom. But their politicians and politicians will yield to the pressure. And so, that makes our job more difficult, because if we can't, if we can't derive revenue from property taxes, we're obviously looking at other revenue sources, and there may be some. We have urban, excuse me, urban renewal districts this year, for example, that are, what's the term I'm looking for, Adina? That are expiring, okay? And so, there's going to be additional revenue coming in. Liquor sales, revenue sharing from the state, the states are Washington cash. So, as I'm speaking, you're probably thinking, well, whoopee, you've got all this money coming in, potentially, but we don't know until we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, which of course is the end of September. But we have to make a decision with regard to you folks before then. And so, this is the balancing act. So, the reason I'm depicting this is, along with what Leslie just said, is try and understand what we're going through. From my perspective, in the short term, next year, two years, I think you need to stay where you are. The question is, how do we make that work? That's the challenge.
You guys, what?
So, I'm not asking you to answer the question, this is what we have to figure out.
So, just from my perspective, in reference to moving forward, a timeline that we should check back, so this doesn't get away, in reference to the lease...
When do you expire, actually? Is it...
The 20, in September.
Right at the end of our fiscal year?
Yeah.
What I would do for starters is push back, see if you can hold, see if you can hold the figure at the current rate. Because if it's a partnership, then let's make it a partnership. We paid for the last two years, there's a potential to, and I can't speak for my co-commissioners, potentially pay for the next two, but with a 20% increase, that's going to make it very difficult. So, if you'd like to take an action item, there's one. And that would probably be the best case to keep. You don't need the disruption at this point, it's working fine for you where you are, correct?
It's getting there.
Okay. That work? Worth an effort?
Yeah, and so, would you be the contact? The reason I say this is that there may be someone different in this, in my position in about 30 days. So, I want to be able to sort of have this in motion, if we can.
Contact me.
So, I will go back and have a discussion with Dr. Stauffer from the Coeur d'Alene Center and see what we can do, and depending upon the outcome of that discussion, would then communicate that back to the board then. And if, if, if everybody agrees, then I guess the next step would be, I think the university, I think we both reviewed it, and I, I'm trying to remember, if the university drafted the initial lease and then your folks...
Well, our legal department would have reviewed it, yes.
I can't remember whether you initiated it or we, I can find that out. But one way or the other, then the next steps would be to, you know, basically, it would stay the same except for those, except for the dates, basically.
Sure.
And so, what I'm hearing you say is the potential for two, an extension of two years, if we can...
If you can hold it.
Okay.
I'm speaking for myself, but that's where I'm coming from. Joe?
Just a comment, it appears to me, anyway, just being a member, and of course, we're just an ad hoc committee here, we have no official influence, but if we could, just to have a stopgap measure here for the next couple of years, because, yes, I brought up the Kootenay Electric Building, it seems as if that's certainly a far more centrally-located site than the one at where the university is, and however that might work out, but it just seems like, you know, that you were able to find funds for the purchase of that, and those weren't necessarily a budget item either. So, I just felt that we would like to see, anyway, a two-year extension on this, and certainly, I think, the extension service, as a co-op entity here, needs to look down the road right now at two years from now, if there is a possibility, with your long-range plan at the fairgrounds, or whether it's at the Kootenay Electric Building, but I mean, everything takes time, and one year leads into three normally, just in terms of getting everything accomplished. So, that would be my input, anyway, just that we got to look down the road right now as to where maybe extension might be in two more years. We appreciate that they need to stay where they're at, and just moving around is a terrible thing for this type of, of a enterprise, anyway, so...
Kootenay Electric breaks ground this week, is that right, March 31st?
Yeah, but they're still not going to be out until December of '23.
Okay, so we're out, just under two years.
Yeah, a year and a half, or a year and three quarters. So, the purchase of the Kootenay Electric, first of all, happened before any of the chaos that we had to deal with. Second of all, it's one-time fee, this is ongoing...
Recurring.
Right, yeah, so, you know, obviously, you're looking at, you know, two to three years or whatever, which is not a huge amount of money, but I don't ever use one-time money, I don't ever use our savings account to pay for things that are ongoing. So, that's, you know, yeah, we found money for it, but that's, it's for a one-time purchase, and people complain all the time, well, you know, boards of commissioners don't look into the future. Well, we did, by purchasing that building. So, I just want to point those things out.
Should we be looking at a one-time purchase for the extension facility, then?
Could, if it's the right...
Just asking.
Yep.
What kind of square footage do you currently occupy? Are you, is it 4,000?
It's close, it's 3,700, almost 3,800, I think.
And then we also have access to a classroom as well.
Oh, yeah.
How much, to put it in perspective, and again, we're just throwing this about, the Kootenay Electric Building is 56,000 square feet, and that's the commercial space, there's other stuff. How much traffic do you have in and out? A lot?
Yeah.
Because one of the plans that we have for that building, and obviously, this could change between now and then, but, is to extend motor vehicle and driver licensing, so you know there's going to be a fair amount of traffic. If we add substantially to that, then the question becomes, how disruptive does that become to county operations? I'm just throwing that out.
Most of our...
These are questions that we have to answer.
Yeah, most of our traffic, though, happens in the evening and on the weekends. That's when...
That's interesting.
We're doing our programming and classes, because we work off schedule, you know? So, we do get an amount of walk-in, but it's, you know, when our big groups come in, it's off hours.
Not so much 9 to 5.
Yeah.
Would make any sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Just the outline of it, we can talk...
One other comment, Kootenay Electric does have another five acres on the south side of Dakota Avenue, where they currently are storing poles, transformers, et cetera. That might be something to possibly look at for either the motor vehicle or driver's license and/or the extension office at that site, because they're obviously going to move everything out to their new location out there on Meyer Road now, too. So, that could be an opportunity, maybe, that could come about.
So, let's see what we can do here in the short term. By that, I mean the next two years, and that'll buy us some time to figure out where we go from there. But yeah, by all means, contact me, let's see if we can hold this rent and just go from there, so that you don't have to deal with the disruption. And I can appreciate that. Yes, sir?
Commissioner, my name is Pierce Clegg. First of all, thank you for giving us the time. I know you're busy. I've been before you many times, or before, so, as Joe said, we're just an ad hoc committee. I have an interest in this. One thing, I've been quoted many times, I talked to Teresa here, who's head of the 4H. As sheriff, I did not have problems with 4H kids, period, or their family, because they're involved. We have a different type of family moving in the area. They, they don't have the room for pigs and goats and chickens, so they go to different things. I remember Teresa coming before, one of the boards I sit on, asking for us to help with some money to finance a drone. And I cannot tell you what went through my mind, we're on tape. However, that night I went home, I turned on the Rural Farm Channel, and I'm watching a farmer talk about drones flying over crops, and I thought, okay, we're teaching these kids something. Teresa also informed the board, that year alone, that one year, she had 500 new 4H kids move in. That's a lot. And so, I look at it, now, obviously, this is not going to be the take care of the sheriff's problem, I understand that, but if we did not have that, we would have bigger problems. Julie Green, who I first met, worked within my agency, she worked with me, she was from the Coeur d'Alene School District, and she taught inside the juvenile facility. Julie, do you remember ever having a 4H kid in your...
I don't. I am Julie Green, and medically, I need to wear this mask. Can you hear me through it?
Okay, it's quite all right.
Okay, I know it's a bit of a muzzle. Yes, I do. Pierce and I started with juvenile detention, I also was the principal of the alternative school for many, many years in this area. What we found is, nothing you will see as a budget line item, but what we found was the value added to have points of interest where stakeholders, students, parents, horticultural enthusiasts could merge, and that's what I'm kind of veering off what you're saying, Pierce. But, so my advocacy is what our programs offer to all of the members of our community, especially new members, there are so many new people moving to our area, who are not familiar with what this area entails horticulturally. And I am a lifelong educator, it is very close to what I value in my heart. Education has changed from the traditional method, as in your seat, there's a lot of online learning, there are a lot of private schools, there's a lot of homeschooling that happens now, and I do know that these programs offer community resources beyond the classroom, beyond the curriculum, beyond what can just be provided in those different educational venues. And I'm speaking about Master Gardener, that's the program with which I volunteer, but certainly can include all of those programs. So, I'm making a pitch for what this adds to our community as a point where we really, we can merge on this. It gives us all kind of a stake in the same arena.
And I think 4H is invaluable to the community, no question.
I agree.
No question.
Commissioner, again, I thank you very much for your time, and...
You're very welcome, thank you for coming.
The 500 I use is one year, we've probably addressed 75 to 10,000 people now. I'm just amazed, when I go around and there's a little burp in the paper about me, which I did not appreciate, really, but being on the chairboard. However, it's amazing how many, I'm not talking tens or twenties, I'm talking hundreds of people contact me saying, we're glad you're involved. And so, agriculture, even though we're being ate up by the homes, it's still out there and still near and dear. We were originally an agriculture county, and the only reason I'm giving you that or saying that, just for background information, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes, sir, I really am, because...
You're the first one to say that.
You're not seeing me, either.
No, no, trust me.
I know, I hear you. Well, you know, you've been around this...
I'm trying to enjoy retirement, somehow I keep getting sucked into certain things. But having said that, I do know that you're in tough spots, like, say, in April, we all give our budgets, and then summer's trying to figure out what, and then it's a mad dash in August, trying to finalize that as the time ticks down, so, again, thank all of you.
You bet, let's see what we can do. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir?
Bob Bealland, I'm an Idaho Master Forest Steward. Just a little bit about what Sheriff Clegg said, we're no longer the blue-collar community. Forestry jobs are declining and they have... Forestry jobs are declining, and they have declined, there's no argument about that. Just in 2016 is the latest number I have, from private forests only, family-owned forests, $10 million in wages for the foresters and loggers. Just in Cootenay County, Forest Service and BLM land is 43% of the forested property. Family-owned foresters, 43%. So who supports family foresters? The Extension Office. IDL has two family forest specialists to try to provide services. They do a really good job, they're professional foresters. We don't have that many professional foresters anymore. So the Master Forest Stewards make contact with family foresters, provide information and procedures for thinning, fuels reduction, wildfires will tear us up, if we get a spark going, it'll make 1910 look like a campfire, because the fuels are overloaded. We produce increased productivity in our forest lands, national average for properly-managed forest, doesn't sound like much, is an increase of $113 an acre for properly-managed foresters. That means $2.9 million in Cootenay County for family foresters. So the Extension Office does a really good job of getting people motivated out into the forest, and doing a service to the entire county by helping with those fuels reductions, productivities. And if I just throw a plug in for classrooms, I attended a class on Saturday, max capacity in the classroom was 80. What was the maximum capacity in the Extension Office at the Elections Office? I think it was 20 at the most. We had over 65 students in that class Saturday. So it's something that's popular, and utilized, and is a value-added benefit to the county. Thank you for your time this morning, I appreciate it.
And thank you. Okay, then, so the time is 11:30, meeting's adjourned, thank you all, appreciate it.